Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, January 21st, 2021. It's just after 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. It possibly is a joint meeting of Chairman Bouchard from the Conservation Commission. I see a quorum present from CONCOM. Do you want to call a meeting to order? Are you just going to be present as observers tonight? You're muted, Bob. Go ahead.
Yeah, that better?
Yep.
All right, we'll be just observing tonight. Thank you.
Very good. So if that's the case for attendance from the Planning Board, I have myself present, Mark Knox, Chairman. I have Barbara Mankowski, Vice Chair, present. I have Peter Conroy, present, Michelle McCracken, present, and Jack Lynch, present. So we have a full board from the Planning Board. And in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, the January 21st, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv backslash. At this time, I'd like to start our main item on the agenda. It is meeting with Rhino Capital Advisors and their engineering firm, VHB. Tonight's topic of discussion is traffic. And just because I know we have a full meeting schedule or a full occupancy tonight in the meeting, I am going to limit all comments to two minutes for everybody when I open the floor to public comment. That's no exceptions. And if I have more time at the end and we missed you, we won't miss you. But if we have more time at the end, I may allow a second comment. But at this time, Brittany Gesner, would you like to do your presentation on traffic?
Sure thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. All right, let me just get my screen share. You can all see that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm excited that tonight is public hearing number four for this project, which, as outlined on our originally scheduled outline, this is the halfway point. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of positive reinforcement that we're nearing about halfway there if we are able to stay on this originally outlined schedule. Before we get into the topic of tonight, I do want to introduce a proposed change to the public hearing schedule. And you can see that outlined here in red. And I apologize, I'm looking away, but it's because the screen I'm presenting is next to me. So that's why it looks like I'm looking away. But you can see here, outlined in red, are some changes to the public hearing schedule that we would like to introduce. And the reason for these changes are the last three meetings have been, you know, we've had great conversation, they've been very informative, and we've really heard the boards, the commission, and the abutters. And because of that, we would like to make a few changes to the proposed project in response to the comments that have been raised by the peer review team, the town, and most importantly, the abutters. Some of those changes include, we would like to reduce the amount of parking that we're proposing on the project. We would like to, we'll need to relocate some of the stormwater basins in response to the wetland delineation outcome. And probably the most important change is we would like to add some landscaping berms to the project, both to the front of the site and the back of the site. And we would also like to increase the height of the landscape berm on the Rush Pond roadside of the project. So a fair amount of changes that I just outlined. But incorporating all of those changes does take some time. But we feel that it's very important to capture those changes and present those changes to this group. So what we are proposing is we are working very hard right now to incorporate those changes into the site plans and the stormwater report in the NOI. And we are proposing to submit those revised materials to the town next Thursday on January 28th. And then we have, our next hearing is scheduled for February 4th. And originally, we were going to discuss stormwater management as well as the impacts proposed within wetland buffer zone, as well as the direct wetlands impacts proposed as part of removing the landfill and site grading and erosion control. And so what we are proposing is all of that technical content to push it to public hearing number six on February 18th and use the next hearing on February 4th to introduce the changes that we're proposing. Again, they're all in direct responses to the requests that we've received as part of these public hearings. Additionally, if there are any outstanding items, either from tonight or any of the other public hearings, if you don't mind either raising those, you know, tonight or separately offline, we'd be happy to discuss those at the next hearing as well. So we can discuss any questions or comments on that revised proposed schedule during the, at the end, during the comment and question period. But that is what we are proposing for revised schedule. And so with that, I'll pull it back to tonight's hearing, where really, we're going to discuss speculative development briefly, but then the entire focus is going to be on traffic. One other unique item about tonight's traffic discussion is that all of the other public hearings we've had, the content has really focused on the site and the site development. And what's really unique about traffic is we're going to be reviewing the traffic study for the project. And traffic is really focused on off-site. It's focused on the intersections that get you to the project. It's focused on Main Street. So I just want to kick off this meeting with that sort of differentiator, that this, tonight, we're going to really be focusing off-site, be focusing on Main Street, be focusing on the traffic that you may or may not be running into as part of this project, and not so much focusing on, you know, the site development itself. So with that, I am happy to pass it over to Matt Keely, VHB's traffic engineer, who's been working on this project.
Could I just ask a question to you, Brittany?
Of course.
Before we... So on the proposed changes to the public hearing schedule?
Yep.
For example, I see Wetlands is hearing number six, February 18th. That didn't change. That's still on that same date? Because CONCOM...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The Conservation Commission continued their hearing to date specifically the old hearing list, so...
Correct. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up, Mark. I did not mention that. So our request of the Conservation Commission is that you still open your public hearing on February 4th, because that's when your last hearing was continued to. And then we've requested that you continue, you know, to February 18th. And that we'll be discussing the project that's proposed within the buffer zone on the 18th. And the reason for the request for pushing that is all of these changes really do impact the amount of work we're doing within buffer zone. And we want to make sure we get this right. So, so, Mark, to answer your question, they did continue to February 4th. So yes, we still will need to open that hearing.
And how about Board of Health, I think, did a similar thing?
They had continued to the 18th. So the...
And that hasn't changed.
Correct. Septic and utilities have not changed.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. So with that, I'll pass it off to Matt Keely, VHB's traffic engineer.
Tyler was going to start off with the first couple of bullets.
Apologies. Sorry about that. I'll pass it off to Tyler with Rhino Capital.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Matt. So at our last hearing, we kicked off by talking about the entitlement and permitting process and also touched on speculative development to try to help sort of limit the, maybe some confusion or concerns that were around it. So in regards to traffic, I wanted to just give a couple of examples before I turn it back over to Matt to talk about sort of the comparative scenario. But in the event that we did have a tenant in tow, and as we've discussed, we don't currently have one, it is speculative. The tenant, because of the distance out of the project, we're going out a couple of years here, they would still be estimating what they would be using. So what they do is they use a combination of the ITE data that we're doing, their own data that they have from other similar facilities, and they would come up with an estimate. Similarly, we're using the ITE trip generation data, which reviews the comparable uses from other facilities. In either event, with or without the tenant, it's still an estimate. So that's sort of the typical process. And I wanted to at least just highlight that because I know that there's been some concern over not having the tenant. It's just always an estimate in either scenario. So I wanted to give it back over to Matt because he does have a comparative scenario, just to talk about some real-world events. Obviously, Matt does this for other projects to help shed a little more light on that.
Yeah, just to give a little background. So using Institute of Transportation Engineers trip generation rates is the industry standard. And I just want to point out that it is the standard even when the tenant is known. And just as an example, VHB's done a lot of work with program retail clients over the years, like Stop &amp; Chops, CVS, Home Depot. And to, you know, to meet state guidelines, we still do need to use the ITE trip generation rates, even though we may know the tenant. So I just wanted to give some context there for this product where we don't know the tenant and we're relying on ITE rates. So with that being said, I'd like to just jump into the traffic presentation. I think just to start off, it might be beneficial for everybody if I just sort of run through the typical components of a traffic assessment. I know not everybody really knows what we do when we do these assessments and what actually goes into them. So I thought I might just run through the components real quickly. And then I'll just get into a little bit more detail on each of these as I go through the presentation. So the first step in a typical traffic study is to do an evaluation of existing conditions. As part of that, we would go out to all our study area intersections, take an inventory of the geometry, traffic control, pavement conditions, things like that. We'd collect traffic volumes during the peak hours. We'd take a full crash history for the intersection for a period of five years. And then we do what's called capacity analysis. And that's when we evaluate the intersection to see how efficiently it's operating and how much delay vehicles experience during the peak hours. The next step in the study is to get an analysis of future conditions. And as part of that, we apply historic traffic growth rates. And we also, we also take into account any other projects that are proposed in the area that might add traffic to the area. So what we start with is what we call our no-build condition.
Join the meeting.
And in keeping with state guidelines, we project traffic out seven years. So we would have a 2027 condition without the proposed project. And that would include historic traffic growth as well as other projects that are proposed. The next step in the study is to estimate how much traffic our project is going to generate and call that our trip generation. After that, we have to determine where those vehicles are coming from and going to. That's our trip distribution. That's typically based on US Census data, journey-to-work data, and existing travel patterns that we observed during the existing conditions evaluation. We take our trip generation and then we add it on to the roadway network based on that trip distribution. And that gives us our build traffic volumes. So 2027 conditions with the project in place. Once we have those volume conditions established, we do capacity analysis again for the no-build and build conditions. And then we compare those results. So the no-build analysis versus the build analysis allows us to identify any potential impacts and determine if mitigation is needed to address those impacts. Next slide, Brittany. So for starting off, just wanted to go through our study area. So you'll see the six intersections that are on the map there. They're all focused on Main Street. So we have at the northern end, the 495 northbound ramps, southbound ramps, then Commercial Drive and Route 79, Bridge Street, our northern site driveway, our Civilly Southside driveway in Lori Lane, and then the intersection of Clear Pond Road and Bond Street. One thing I just want to make sure everybody is clear on with the site access is that our only site access points are those two driveways off of 105. I know the previous use for the site did have a connection out to Route 79 that has been abandoned and is no longer passable. And there are no plans for this project to connect access to Route 79. So for all these study areas... Thanks. For all these study area intersections, we have to establish our study periods. And as you'll see, there are 7:00 to 9:00 AM in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the evening. Those are the times where the typical commuter traffic is at its highest. And those would be the time periods where the combination of that commuter traffic and our site traffic would be at its peak. So that's where we focus our analysis, is on those peak hours. So in terms of data collection, we had data from a number of sources out there in addition to counts that we did in September. So we have existing data from 2017 at the 495 interchange, as well as the Route 79 and Commercial Drive intersection from the South Coast Rail Project. There was also a study done for the Route 105 at Bridge Street intersection in 2019. Now, they just mentioned we conducted traffic counts in September of 2020. So I previously reached out to Mastot to get a little bit of feedback on what they'd like to see for COVID adjustments. They had initially suggested, you know, counting at least one of the intersections that overlapped with the data that we had. And they suggested using 105 at Bridge Street. We actually went a step further and we counted actually the whole study area, all six intersections in September 2020, just so we could get a better handle on what those COVID adjustments would need to be. As part of our scoping letter with Mastot, we put forth our suggested methodology for adjusting accounts for COVID conditions. Had some back and forth, and we were able to come to a methodology that we agreed upon. So we would really start out with a solid base for our baseline traffic lines for existing conditions, which would set the stage for the rest of the study. And in addition to those counts, we just recently did some counts last week as part of our peer review process with environmental partners. As I mentioned in the introduction, the future conditions analysis includes other projects that are planned in the area. So I just wanted to give a list here, just to show you how thorough the study is. And we had seven projects here. I'm not going to go through one by one, but these are projects that were either not in existence while, when we took our traffic counts or they're currently planned and will be built in the future. Just want to note that one of those projects is the South Coast Rail Project, which is going to have some volume shifts from the existing station to the proposed station just east of the 495 interchange. So definitely some reduction in volume along that section of 105. So in addition to those projects, as I mentioned, we use a historic traffic growth rate. And for this project, it was 0.55% per year for that seven-year projection. Trip generation. So how do we figure out how much traffic the project is going to generate? So the picture you see on the right-hand side there, that is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. What that is, is a national database of traffic counts at a wide range of land uses. Pretty much anything you can imagine, they have traffic data for it. So in this case, we use Land Use Code 150, which is specifically for warehousing. There are other warehousing uses within ITE, but they have a description of each of those uses as part of the data set. And we felt that, based on what they're proposing on the site here, that Land Use Code 150 is the best fit. So these trip generation rates are used to make projections based on the size of the project. So basically, we plug our 402,000-square-foot building into the equations that are in the manual, and that gives us the trip generation projections. As I mentioned before, this is really the industry standard even when the tenant is known. So we're really bound by using ITE rates as part of, at least as part of Mastot process. ITE data was also used to quantify the trip generation for the project. So just to go through the summary of the calculations, I have them broken up here by passenger cars and trucks that were calculated using ITE. As you'll see, for the weekday daily, we have a total number of 682 trips, broken up as 440 passenger cars and 242 truck trips. During the weekday AM peak hour, we have a total of 74 trips, which breaks down to 66 passenger car trips and eight truck trips. And for the weekday PM peak hour, we have a total of 77 trips, 65 passenger car trips, and 12 truck trips. So just a few notes on these projections here. Our traffic study has been reviewed by environmental partners and Mastot. They both have some comments on the trip generation calculations, and we're going to be working through those comments with them. Also, just wanted to note that if a tenant is secured during the permitting process and we find out that the specific use is anything different than what we're projecting here, we could revisit the trip generation calculations based on any knowledge we gain from that process. And one final note here is that, you know, these are estimates, as Tyler alluded to in the beginning. We are going to be subject to implementing a traffic monitoring program with Mastot. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. But essentially, we're going to have to do post-occupancy traffic counts to compare our projections to what is actually being generated by the site. So just to put things in context, I know that some people might hear the number 682 and not really know what that means in terms of how they experience it on the roadways. I always say that, you know, the traffic that you experience on the roadways is the peak hour traffic. That's what you're sitting in, that's what you're driving through Route 105. That's peak hour traffic. That's really traffic that you can experience in your car. Daily traffic is a little bit harder to get your head around. So I just wanted to put it in context with some other nearby land uses along this corridor. Walgreens and CVS, Seasons Gas, and McDonald's. As you can see, our 682 trips on the left-hand side, if you look at Seasons Gas, a daily number of, you know, 2,766 is, you know, almost quadruple. Similarly, for the peak hours, some of the land uses are just significantly two and threefold higher than what we're projecting for the site here. Couple notes on what our 682 trips means. It results in about a 4% to 7% increase, depending on where... Somebody... Moving on.
No streaming, tell Maps. Somebody go in there.
So... Our project traffic would result in about a 4% to 7% increase on peak hour traffic on Main Street. As I mentioned before, the South Coast Rail is going to result in a decrease on Main Street at Commercial Drive and Points East. And we also don't really know the long-term effects of what COVID is going to do to overall commuter traffic. So I'm just trying to put a raw perspective here of how the project relates to the local area here. In terms of the trip distribution, as I mentioned before, it's based on US Census Journey to Work data. So we have data for, you know, the town of Lakeville, where people work, and for the people who work in Lakeville, where they're coming from. That's generally how we assign these percentages. We also take into account the existing travel patterns on 105. As you can see, and as you would expect, the majority of the traffic is oriented to the east on 105 towards 495. We have a small amount of traffic using Bridge Street, 3%, and then 5% using Route 79. We would expect, and as you might note here, that the title of this is Passenger Car Trip Distribution. The trip distribution for trucks, we would anticipate it to be oriented to 495 primarily. So probably even higher than what the passenger car distribution is. And also, one thing to note, and I know we've mentioned this at previous meetings, but as part of the discussions early on in the project, trucks will not be allowed to use Bridge Street. So our traffic study results, so we have the capacity analysis for 2020 existing conditions, 2027 no-build, and 2027 build. Capacity analysis essentially evaluates the level of service of each intersection. And the level of service is a grading system through F based on the average vehicle delays, what they experience at those intersections. So comparing our no-build results and our build results, there were no drops in level of service. And that really indicates a minimal impact during the peak hours. So in terms of proposed mitigation, with, you know, minimal impacts to capacity, we really want to focus on the site and what we can do to try and reduce the amount of traffic and the amount of single occupancy vehicles that we have going to and from the site. So the details of the TDM program are really going to be coordinated with the town of Lakeville and Mastot through the MEPA process. But just to give you a couple of examples, you know, promoting car pooling and van pooling, providing information on alternate modes of transportation, providing onsite amenities like bike racks, showers and changing rooms for the people that don't want to drive to work, either they want to walk or ride their bike to work, and incentivizing use of public transportation. There's a long list of other TDM measures that will be implemented, but didn't want to go through them all here. But just those are the types of things geared towards getting people out of their cars and reducing the number of vehicles going to the site. In terms of transportation monitoring, I mentioned that earlier. The standard for Mastot is six months after occupancy, conduct those counts every year for five years at a minimum. Those counts will include continuous 24-hour traffic counts at both site driveways. We would also do AM and PM peak hour trending movement counts at select intersections. We'd also include a travel survey for employees to see who is using, who's taking advantage of the TDM benefits on site. And all of that data would be reported back to the town of Lakeville and Mastot. So just to give a summary of the review process, where we're at right now, as far as the local process goes, the traffic study has been reviewed by Lakeville and the peer reviewer. We have submitted our response to the peer review comments this week, actually. And the town and the peer reviewer have those in hand and are currently reviewing those. In terms of the state, this traffic study was reviewed by MEPA Office and Mastot, both their Boston office and District 5 office, as part of the expanded ENF that we submitted. We'll be submitting response to those comments as part of the preparation of our environmental impact report. Then Mastot will get another chance to review those things and hopefully finalize any mitigation commitments after the submission of the EIR. And then once that's all complete, once the commitments are finalized, the project will require a Mastot access permit after we complete MEPA review. So I think that's essentially it for the traffic study presentation.
So we have obtained a lot of information over the past two weeks.
Sure you have.
So I guess most of my questions are going to be directed to you, Matt. And I probably will want our peer review representative, Scott, to weigh in on some of these. I didn't see in the VHB rebuttal to the peer review memorandum from environmental partners, a section on mitigation. I did see it in your presentation right there, so I may have just overlooked it with some of the text. You just touched on the transportation monitoring program, which it's recommended by EP to formalize and mutually agree upon between the applicant, town of Lakeville, town of Middleborough, and Mastot. I think that's a great start at that, to have all of those entities involved, not just town of Lakeville and Mastot, just in the effort of being a good neighbor.
Just to clarify, I think the, if you see the last page or second to last page, has a paragraph on...
On the VHB's response?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw you had, they recommended some bike lanes and stuff. You do have... The other recommended things for reducing some traffic impacts with the bike lanes and the showers and car pooling. One of my biggest concerns about the traffic, and I know you're using the ITE trip-generated information that's at hand for everybody, that's normal. I guess my thing is, like, for example, you used Seasons Gas Station as one of the comparative properties that's nearby there, that's 2,700 trips during the course of a day. I go there because I might need gas when I'm going towards the Cape and I'm just going to be getting on the highway. But I was already going by when I'm stopping at Seasons Gas.
Yep.
My thoughts toward this new project are, all 680 trips are not just going by. That's 100% new traffic. And I'm sure, you know, everybody listening would agree. Probably sixty percent of the people that stop at that Seasons Gas Station, if not more, are Lakeville residents that just chose not to drive over the line and use the New England Farms or whatever it is in Middleborough now. So I'd like you to speak to that because I feel like all seven hundred or so trips a day are brand-new traffic, whereas a lot of the traffic that may be going through some of those other entities is townspeople that are already here.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate you bringing up pass-by traffic because sometimes I have a hard time explaining that when, you know, if I'm doing a retail project or a gas station-type project. And you're and you're right, I think, you know, gas stations are probably about sixty to seventy percent pass-by. And then, you know, and then something like McDonald's is also something up in the in the range of forty to fifty percent pass-by. The thing is with with pass-by traffic, it's still traffic that has to enter and exit those driveways. So it does still cause friction on the main line. So while it was already on the road, yes, it's not necessarily additional traffic to Main Street. It still does cause those interruptions as part of accessing the site. Just sort of giving those examples for context, just to show the amount of activity of locations as compared to the proposed location.
Scott Turner, would you care to comment on that or my comments regarding the pass-by traffic as opposed to new sites' traffic?
So with regards to that specific question, I'd like to defer to our traffic group. Jim Fitzgerald and Jane Davis are here from Environmental Partners. They did the peer review for the traffic. I do have some other comments about some other aspects of it, but Jim or Jane, if you could comment, appreciate that.
Sure, I'll handle that question, not a problem. Yes, you are correct about pass-by traffic. And while we while we recognize that this pass-by traffic does add traffic to the network and will increase the number of turns in and out of the driveway. Certainly, the relevance here is also the fact that it's adding traffic throughout other intersections as well. So the impacts of sites that are creating both new trips as well as pass-by trips does have multiple effects in in different areas. So yes, I I agree with the statement that Matt made, having to do with the turns at the driveway itself. But certainly by the the subject site that we're talking about will generate six, seven hundred or or more trips, depending on the methodology determined, used to determine trip generation here. And they will all be new trips to the network.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I I just want to clarify that that the reason for including those comparative uses was just to provide context because if if you're not a traffic engineer, what does six hundred or seven hundred trips per day mean? So we really just wanted to provide context. We are certainly not trying to imply that this site will operate anything like a McDonald's or Seasons Gas or something like that. So just to clarify the intent of of that context information.
Yeah, and and please don't think I'm trying to say anything underhanded was done there as much as I'm a layman. And I just thought of that as, I I think I brought up a good valid point. And reading these traffic, reading these traffic studies is quite difficult if I don't, you know, a lot of abbreviations and a lot of information that unless you're not expert in it is tough to break down. That's I'm glad that we have a peer review team that's doing that for us. So Scott, you had said you had some other comments towards the the traffic report or other.
Yeah, so to be clear, I'm not a traffic engineer. However, I've been doing private site development for close to thirty years. And I I understand and respect the standard practice of using ITE. However, I am concerned about the consistency between the site plan and the trips, especially as it pertains to parking and the truck loading. The site plan that was submitted had four hundred trips, I'm sorry, four hundred parking spaces and oh, you can correct my math if I'm wrong, three hundred parking spaces. Hundred and sixty total spaces, including the land bank spaces. If they need that many trip, if they need that many cars to park on the site, that's going to generate more trips than is indicated by the ITE. So I think there has to be some type of reconciliation between the parking on site that they're showing and the trips. I also understand that this could be a twenty-four-hour-a-day facility. So I think that has to be taken into account somehow, too. If you have three shifts going in there or three eight-hour shifts, you're going to generate more traffic. Is it going to affect the peaks? You know, that's unclear. So I think, you know, and we've asked this for this, well, we've referenced this in our traffic review letter. I think they need to provide some type of reconciliation of the parking and how it pertains to the ITE trip generation. And this is something that, again, I have done on other projects. With regards to parking, a lot of, and I and I know that we talked about site parking before. A lot of towns, a lot of municipalities now are going towards building what you need, which is what I think their their intent is, however, what they think they might need. And maybe, again, this might go to the fact that it's a, it's, this is speculative development, they don't have a tenant yet. They're speculating that they might have more traffic or or more park, they might need more parking than they than was industry standard, which they have claimed, which they have talked about being one space per thousand square feet, which I which I agree with. I mean, I think that that is a that is a reasonable ratio. But I think they just need to to reconcile those numbers. And I don't think that is an extraordinary request. And a couple of other.
Scott, do you want me to jump in on that a little bit?
Let me get through, let me get through my stuff, Jane, and then we'll, and then I'll let you guys jump in. So other comments that I had is I was curious about the effectiveness of the TDM, given the fact that, given the nature of the site, given the location of the site, you know, how many folks are going to ride their bikes or walk to this facility, given its location? And then also regarding the Mast dot comments and your responses, I'd love to be able to see the Mast dot comments and VHB's responses to the project, responses to those comments. For that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and Jane to go through some of our other comments.
Hey, thanks, Scott. Hi, I'm Jane Davis with Environmental Partners. So we did the thorough review and it's it seems, you know, since we're on the topic of trip generation, that is the kind of the main point of discussion here that we think there still continues to be questions regarding that. And and we do agree that ITE is the industry standard and that a lot of times there is no tenant slated for the project before, when you're doing the trip generation. But there are times when ITE also recommends using local data to verify if this data is available. And, you know, with with this type of warehouse land use code, there are several land use codes in ITE that all give varying results for the same size development. So there are some that give five hundred trips per day and there are some that give two thousand trips per day. So that's that's a big discrepancy just within IT itself. And without knowing the type of warehouse, it's hard to say that the six eighty-two is a fair estimate. And as Scott mentioned, the the site plan doesn't seem to align with the trip generation in the in the daily trips. You know, if you are going to have three hundred spaces for passenger vehicles, that's six hundred trips a day just for workers. And that's that's one shift. And it's not not to mention, you know, the multiple shifts in twenty-four hours. And that doesn't include any truck trips. And there's a hundred and twenty loading docks. And if all of those were to be used once or twice a day, that's another, you know, two hundred and fifty to five hundred trips on top of the the passenger vehicle trips. So the numbers just, they can add up depending on on what is exactly happening. And I think that we just, we need more clarification as to what type of warehouse is going in here to be able to to really verify if ITE is accurately predicting the number of trips that are going to be going in and out of the site. Think that was that was kind of our main, our main point. As regarding the mitigation, you know, along with what Scott said, you know, the the proponent is committed to the TDM, but if there are no bike lanes on one oh five, it's would be difficult for for people to bike there comfortably. So that was one of our recommendations was to coordinate with Mast dot regarding the feasibility of adding some bike lanes along one of to to make that an option for workers to access, access the site by bike. And, you know, there were a couple of intersections that were above the Mast dot, higher than Mast dot average for signalized and unsignalized intersections. And we recommended some level of mitigation at those intersections. And and that would also be dependent on the trip generation and how many vehicles are going in and out of there and how many vehicles are going to be impacting those intersections. So everything kind of comes back to the trip generation, really nailing down that number to know exactly what is is needed as far as mitigation goes.
You want me to start responding to those?
Can I take the parking one, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Um, so Scott and Jane, thank you very much for your review. And we we completely agree and concur with your analysis of the discrepancy between the trip generation and the parking. To to provide a bit of background, when we first started thinking about employee count, because even a bit more background, parking per the the Lakeville zoning bylaw, parking for this type of facility is based on the number of employees. And when we first started thinking about the number of employees for this facility, we were actually thinking about septic design. We started thinking about septic before we were thinking about parking. And so to be as conservative as, when you do septic design, it is also based on the number of employees in your facility. So to be as conservative as possible for the septic design, we said, okay, let's assume one employee per one thousand square feet. One employee per one thousand square feet is pretty standard for a very densely populated warehouse. I would say a warehouse like is being proposed here is probably closer to one, one employee per fifteen hundred square feet, maybe even one employee per two thousand square feet. However, we began thinking about septic. And if we're going to design and build the septic system, we want to be as conservative as possible so we don't need to go back and redo that. So we started there, then we looked at, you know, then we started thinking about the site design. And so we had to lay out parking and we looked into zoning and parking per zoning was based on employees. We already made this very conservative assumption for septic. We wanted to be consistent. So in the in the interest of being consistent, we stuck with the one employee per one thousand square feet. Hence, the, we're proposing four hundred and three parking spaces to be built day one. That's what we've submitted. There are also some additional parking spaces that we're land banking. Because there's no tenant, we do need to provide a bit of flexibility to help Rhino Capital market the site so they can actually find a user so that, you know, the the project doesn't go to waste. But we intended to landbank those parking because those parking spaces, because we just wanted to meet zoning. However, we really appreciate Environmental Partners' review. You guys, you you make a very valid point and we we completely agree and concur. And so in re in response, kind of circling back to what I'd started with, we are proposing to remove a fair amount of parking day one and landbank. We are proposing to remove more than one hundred parking spaces to be constructed day one. And then we will landbank even more spaces. I'm sorry, that that sounds, we will, the net total will be a reduction of parking, but we're going to increase the amount of landbank parking so that we're constructing fewer spaces at day one. That way, the number of parking spaces more closely aligns with the trip generation, which we feel very confident in, given, you know, where that information was derived from ITE, given the parking numbers were derived from a septic calculation, which has nothing to do with parking. So that is one of the changes that we're incorporating now that we intend to submit next week. Again, circling back to the reason why we want to change the topics of the next two hearings so that we can really get this right. So I hope that that addresses, you know, the the point you guys are making about trip generation and parking.
So if I'd like to. Is that you, Matt?
Yeah, I was just, if I could just expand a little bit on the trip generation, if that's okay. So Jane had mentioned, you know, she just wants to make sure that, you know, we know to have a comfort level about what kind of warehouse facility this is going to be so we can have a better handle on the trip generation. I just wanted to point out the source that we're using, for example, in the PM peak hour is based on forty-seven different warehouse counts. So I think that would probably encompass, you know, a wide variety of of warehouse uses within that data set. So I just wanted to make that point and and also wanted to make the point that as part of the Mast dot scoping, we were asked to count, you know, a local facility that we thought may be comparable. We counted the Christmas tree shop facility and the peak hour trip generation rates there were almost identical to what we used in the ITE data for the peak hours. So just just make those two points there in terms of correlation between the types of land, warehouse uses.
Okay, so Brittany, in the submission that you give to try and reconcile the number of parking spaces to the trips, could you possibly also generate some data based on numbers of employees potentially per shift? Because I also understand that if you're running more than one shift and there's a changeover, if you had four hundred parking spaces, that doesn't mean you have four hundred employees on for the day shift and four hundred come in at night. And they all have to, like, wait for the first guy to leave to replace him. I'm sure some of that would be, even with a staggered shift, there'd have to be more spaces than employees in order to handle a shift change. So and again, I don't want to get into the inner workings of the business, but if some data could help to provide some validation for for if additional spaces are required for shift, shift change based on numbers of employees per shift, yeah, I think that would be helpful, too, to justify that.
We can, we can summarize a bit of a correlation.
All right, thank you.
I also just want to point out Mast dot asked almost the identical question. So this is going to be an ongoing conversation between us and Environmental Partners and Mast dot. They have the exact same comment, so we'll definitely be focused on it.
Okay. Do Jim Fitzgerald or Jane have any other comments?
Oh, sorry, I I was going to say, I don't think I have any further comments until I I review the revised site design. One thing I would just want to point out is that the the number of loading docks and trips that are being, the truck trips that are going to be using the loading docks should be taken into account as as far as that goes, too. Because that, as I mentioned, those two numbers can add up to be a pretty big number, depending on how many trucks are going in and out there every day.
Can I just ask if if our response letter was distributed to the partners? Yeah.
Yeah, we we just got it two days ago, so we're still going through some of the 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 details and the backups. Thank you for writing all of those backups that we had asked for. Yeah, we're still going through it, but we, you know, I've read through it a few times to understand what changes have been made so far.
Got it. And to answer Scott's question from earlier, Mast dot's comments were due to MIPA on Friday and we don't have them yet, but we will, we will share those with you when we get them.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a comment about about parking. And and there's been a shift in the way municipalities have traditionally approached parking. So for a while, parking was viewed as something that was necessary. And if there was excess parking, that was not necessarily viewed as a bad thing. Over time, and more recently, what you're seeing is a lot of towns are going to, you know, having the same standards, but also requesting developers or applicants to build only what they need. And so I think that, although I respect the, you know, needing to meet zoning, most towns are moving away from that, acknowledging the zoning, but also requiring you to build exactly what you need. I guess the thing that is, I'd like for VHB to address, if they could, is, you know, you're you're saying that we're building to meet zoning or to meet the septic systems, but you're also asking to landbank more. And so I understand that's to give you flexibility in marketing the building. That also implies that you may have more cars. So I think that analysis is very, is just very important. I myself have designed projects that have had landbank spaces. And I think in every single one of them, there's been some type of condition. And I think in every single one of them, there's been some type of condition that has required us to go back and request permission to build those. So I think that's an important item to note for the board. Just something to consider.
Got it, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open up comments to the planning board members. Barbara, do you have any comments?
I do, I have a couple of questions. I guess this is for 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 all the engineers, the train station is going to be moving from Lakeville to Middleborough. The traffic, you know, the these the development, the housing developments that were put around the train station are, you know, there's a good percentage of those people that are using the train that will now be driving or riding perhaps shared shuttles from back and forth from the Lakeville location to the quarter mile or so to the Middleborough location. Did the traffic counts account for the potential traffic changing as a result of the relocation of that South Coast Rail? Both pedestrian and traffic?
Yes, we we utilized the the most recent study that was submitted for South Coast Rail and incorporated their volume shifts onto our traffic networks.
Okay, so Environmental Partners, have you guys had a look at that? The South Coast Rail assumptions that are going to be used that are being implemented for this case?
Uh, yeah, we reviewed, the original document did include the backups from the South Coast Rail. It did include the redistribution of vehicles. So that was one of the things that we requested and from VHB is the backups so that we could verify that what was being rerouted and added was, you know, it made sense with what was actually happening with the South Coast Rail project.
Okay, thank you. We just want to make sure there are a lot of new construction has been done over there. We just want to make sure that the figures that they're utilizing are actual buildout numbers for what's already been permitted over there, because we had quite a sizable development that's been put in since the original two developments that were put in. My next question has to do with traffic. So the study says that we're supposed to have 20 through 2027. We're now into 2021. It's supposed to be a seven year. Should the traffic study be looking forward to 2028? Or are we fine because we started in 2020?
Yeah, it's sort of that typical sort of bridging one year to the next when we submitted in just before, you know, the end of 2020 and now we're in 2021. The state typically is okay with that because, you know, it's obviously permitting takes quite a while. So as soon as we turn it to 2021, we don't want to have to redo the whole thing to add one more year of growth. So essentially, we have established 2020 as our existing condition and that's the way it will be for the rest of the permitting process unless, for some reason, you know, this goes away and comes back a couple of years from now, then we would have to update it. But for one year, it's typically allowed to just continue with the state.
Thank you very much. And my last question, I think it's my last question. So it looks like the study, we 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 focused on six intersections ranging from far side of 105 up into the first intersection into Middleborough. What was the decision process with identifying only those six intersections? Oh, and I do have one more question after this.
Yep. So a couple of things. Standard practice is is, you know, typically to to look at the intersections you think may be the most impacted by the project and to go, you know, a little bit of ways in one direction, a little bit of ways in the other direction. In terms of how Mast dot might scope it, for example, for their guidelines, they have guidelines that say if you add 100 vehicle trips during the peak hour, you should look at that intersection. We're not adding 100 vehicles to any of the any of those intersections. So we're actually sort of exceeding, you know, what Mast dot would potentially require us to do. But we thought that these locations, given that we're directing a lot of people to 495, we should be looking at the routes. And we wanted to at least get the next sort of major intersection to the south, which is why we picked up the Clear Pond and Bond Street, because that's a location where some people could split off in either direction. So we wanted to sort of follow the traffic and to where it's going to disperse and make sure we identify those potential impacts.
Thank you. I have one more question and then I'll pass the torch. I noticed in the presentation today that you indicated that you're you do you do not plan for your tenants to be using Bridge Street. And that seems like that's something voluntary, right? Voluntary nonuse of that particular street?
I think we would probably want to condition that as part of the special permit anyway.
So my next question would be, right, so if you'd consider ruling out Bridge Street, would we consider ruling out Route 79?
I think Tyler could speak more to the to the Bridge Street restriction than I could. And obviously, it's more geared towards tractor trailers. Right.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the restriction intent is for trucks, not necessarily employees getting to work.
Yep. Is there a way that we would consider would would developer be interested or be willing to consider limiting truck traffic on Route 79?
I think that that's something that we could look at absolutely. So I'd need to dig in with Matt, you know, as an off the cuff answer. I have to be honest that the answer is I don't know, but it's something that I'm definitely willing to look at. The Bridge Street item is something that we've been aware of, you know, since even before the project and something that we wanted to voluntary voluntarily commit to to show that, you know, we're trying to make this work as best as we possibly can for the town.
Thank you very much.
So based on Barbara's comment and I Tyler, I appreciate your response. I'm confident that the planning board, as part of the special permit, can condition. And I saw in we did receive a memo from the planning board in Middleborough. They have concerns about traffic, truck traffic going up through the center of Middleborough on 105. I'm guessing to assuming that it would try to access Route 44. And they have concerns about it on North Main Street. So that's part of probably a joint condition, just to try and keep the traffic going to 495. I think that that would be necessary by the planning board. Moving on, Peter, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do, Mark. I was wondering if if Brittany could go back to the slide in her presentation where they talked about the grading of the road, where there was a grading of A through F. And this project adding to this street did not change the grade. Is that possible? We could discuss that further?
Sure.
And I'd like to know what the grade is presently.
There's different levels of service for each intersection and for each time period. So it's a pretty lengthy table that's in our traffic study. It's not just, you know, one letter grade for the whole corridor overall. It's it's broken up by intersection and by time period.
So in other words, at no point, at no point at any of these intersections, does this project lower that intersection's grade?
That's correct.
There's that much, there's that much bandwidth in all those intersections to absorb all this?
Correct.
Wow.
Well, can I just ask the question, is the grading A through F actually like a a test score?
Yes, A is the best and F is the worst. I can say just by looking at the table that the majority of the intersections are Bs and Cs, there is one D. But we don't, I don't see any Fs in in terms of overall intersection operations, they're all D or better.
And Mr. Chairman, that that grading score is industry standard. And Matt, I don't know if you want to provide a little bit of background on, like, it's different for signalized intersections versus unsignalized intersections. And it's based on the the time that cars are delayed at an intersection.
Yeah, just as an example, you know, a level service A is an average delay of zero to 10 seconds. Level service B, you know, say 10 to 20 seconds and so on and so forth. So that's the average delay per vehicle over the course of the peak hour.
That's what, thank you. My next question in regards to traveling eastbound and a truck getting on 495 southbound, if there's a substantial weight, several trucks stack up. Has anybody given thought to these actually affecting the intersection at season's gas? Or do you feel as though there's enough room to house, let's say, six tractor trailers?
So vehicle queuing is is part of the operational summary that's done as part of our traffic study, similar to us not degrading level service at at the intersections. I don't see any significant increases in queuing at the intersections between no build and build as well. Certainly, if there if there's something Environmental Partners saw specifically for a particular movement, we could, we could talk about that, but there's nothing that jumped out at us in terms of our results summary.
All right. And my next question is, as far as the land bank numbers, you don't have that right now as to what you'd be adding to the land bank. We know you're going to remove 100 permanently paved spots right away, but the land back number, not not sure of yet?
No, if if you don't mind, I would prefer answering that just in two weeks. I just want to make sure we we finalize the numbers and I'm giving you the exact results. However, as I said, the the intent is to reduce the the amount of of spaces built day one as well as reduce, you know, once you add in the land bank spaces, the the total would be a reduction as well.
Yep, that's fine. And also, I this may have been touched on in prior meetings, but so obviously, you're not trying to market this building as being subdivisible right away. When you subdivide a building this big, obviously, you would lose, you would gain a lot more employees per square foot, in my opinion. It would, it's not, it's not equal, you know, it it doesn't, it's still not one to one. Is there any plan on that and what you would, what you would move forward marketing wise? How would you handle that?
Would you, Brittany, would you say that, or Tyler, that that would? If we conditioned, obviously, I think we don't want multiple tenants in there, that it's fair to say that you would just market to a singular tenant if the special permit was specific to that?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So I think we're all clear that this is being marketed as a single tenant building and that's our desire and our hope. In the event that if for some reason it'd become a two tenant building, there is some flexibility just based on the construction that we have currently. There is front and rear parking. There's obviously the two entry and exit points that allow for some circulation for if there was a two tenant scenario. But I think back to a couple of comments that Matt was making about the monitoring. So if there was an event of two tenants and that did create a difference in traffic, parking, passenger vehicles, employees, that would all have to come back and be reviewed if it was different than what we had presented. So it's it's sort of a different way of looking at the same same issue, whether we had a single tenant that was more or a two tenant scenario that caused more. It's both more and would sort of result in the same pathway of correction. But that's certainly not our intent, not our hope.
Thank you. Excellent.
Anything else, Peter, are you good?
I'm good, that's it.
Michelle, do you have any questions?
Well, you know, I think I'm I'm looking forward to seeing what Environmental Partners comes back with in regards to the revisions and the decrease in parking spaces proposed. Also, in regards to the Mast dot, I'm not really familiar with the process myself. I've heard that it can take a while. Is there any sort of expectation as to when you will get a response from them?
Yes, either I could take this or Brittany could take it. So as part of the submission of the expanded ENF with MIPA, all comments were due on Friday, I believe. So with the comment period closed, I think they have a week to generate the certificate. So is that, Brittany, does that mean the certificate is due tomorrow or is?
Correct, the certificate is due tomorrow. Full disclosure, we often don't get it until, you know, end of the day Monday. But we expect the the first MIPA certificate is due tomorrow and that will include all public comments that they received as well as all agency comments. So we we should have the first round of formal DOT comments, you know, within within several working days. And then with that, just just to elaborate on the next step is we are requesting a two step MIPA process. So this is MIPA certificate on the first step. And in that certificate, they will outline what they would like for us to include in the next filing. And that typically focuses on all the comments that they received from the various agencies. So then we will spend the next, I don't know, several, you know, month or two, pulling together our response to that, submit it back to MIPA, it'll go to the reviewing agencies, DOT, DEP, and then they'll have a second opportunity to review. Again, public comments will be due to MIPA. They will then issue a certificate and will receive those comments. And then, and I can pass this back to Matt, but once we complete this MIPA process, that's when we can actually begin the Mast DOT access permit process. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, Matt, regarding the access permit?
Yeah, so as as part of the MIPA process, we have to prepare what's called a draft section 61 finding. And the draft section 61 finding essentially outlines your mitigation commitments. That gets submitted to DOT as a draft. And then as part of the final submission, that will be our final section 61 finding. And that will be our commitment to mitigation that will eventually be signed by DOT. And then we can proceed with the access permit process. So that everything's clearly defined and you can move forward with any design you may need to do because it's been memorialized in that in that document.
Okay, now, do you expect to receive the feedback prior to the last proposed hearing date?
That's a good question. What is the last date, Brittany?
It's the the beginning of March. I think we'll be cutting it close because we'll receive the certificate next week. We'll get a better understanding on what actually needs to go into the the final filing, which really determines how long it will take to pull that together. So we should have a better sense of that in the coming weeks. But at this point, I I can't commit, it'll be close. I'll say it'll be close, but I can't commit to either one side or the other.
But I will say, since this is a two step MIPA process with a single environmental impact report, all the substantive issues really have to get fleshed out as part of this round of comments. If there were issues that were significant, they wouldn't allow us to do the two step process. So there's, there should be, you know, a good chance that we'll know exactly what we're up against when we get this certificate.
Okay. And I know Scott had mentioned, you know, he'd like to get a look at that. Is that something you guys are willing to pass along?
Yeah, we we don't have it yet, but yeah, once it's available, yeah.
Okay. And just just one other comment. I know a lot of times, you know, we hear traffic and it's it's in negative, you know, I hate sitting in traffic. But I I think, you know, the lunch break increased traffic. I think that it's going to be, you know, something that, you know, a lot of local businesses could probably be thankful for, especially, you know, going through times like this right now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Jack, do you have any comments related to traffic tonight? Unmute, please, Jack. There you go.
I have a comment regarding asbestos removal, which I will hold off to another meeting.
All right. And so you're good on traffic for now?
Yes, everything on traffic is fine with me.
Thank you. So at this time, I wanted to just read a few things into the record because we got a lot of comments, like I mentioned earlier. I have a whole glossary of, we've received a a letter from Michael P. Maurizio, who is an attorney representing Richard Scott. That has been taken under advisement and forwarded to county council and the proponent or applicant and their engineer. In addition to that letter, we received comments from James and Elizabeth Hutchinson, which are abutters from Seven Rush Pond Road. Your comments have been heard and passed along to all parties involved. Your comments have been heard and passed along to all parties involved. Mark and Heather Bodwell from 13 Rush Pond Road. I wanted to let you know, we did read your comments. Actually, I want to thank you for your comments. Yours were very well-written. And you had a concern about additional berm and plantings. That is currently being addressed. Brittany had referenced changes to the plans. There's possibly some lowering to the site. So we don't have information as of yet, but that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. So you'll want to attend at some upcoming meetings. We have a note from Susan Oxto-Collis. And then I have comments from Jane L. Scott from Rush Pond Road. I'm guessing she's probably from 9 Rush Pond Road. And we have a lot of comments and MEPA-related comments from Richard Scott from 9 Rush Pond Road. Jack, that's quite a thing you put together. I appreciate it. I've read through the whole thing. In addition to that, we have received a letter from the Middleborough Conservation Commission with some concerns and a letter from the Middleborough Planning Board, which I did reference some of that in my comments earlier. So all those things have been received and passed along to our peer review engineer as well as the proponent. And I did notice, I believe the Middleborough planner is attending tonight. Leanne Bradley, if you'd like to make a brief comment, I'll open the floor to you for just a minute or two. Or you ahead?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty, so I hope it's not too disturbing. Thank you very much for including the town of Middleborough in your discussion tonight. It is very much appreciated. Yes, I would have to say that our, one of our major concerns is the tractor-trailers entering Middleborough if they're going past the 495 interchange and heading down, you know, South Main Street, North Main Street through our downtown area. You had mentioned that earlier. And if that could be a condition of, within the approval, that that is prohibited, that would ease a lot of our concerns.
Absolutely. That's a major concern of ours on our side of the town line, too. And I appreciate your concerns and I can guarantee that that will be a condition. My recommendation, my recommendation would be if you could actually put something in writing that's throughway-specific to the actual roads and it's probably, and I know also if a tractor-trailer just happens to be doing local business in Middleborough, we can't prohibit from a delivery in Middleborough if it happened to be coming from this facility. But it's that through traffic that I'm sure it can be monitored. So absolutely.
Okay. Yes, because some tractor-trailers do use that as a, to bypass the rotary to get onto Route 44 headed towards Route 3.
Yep. So.
So an uptick of that, and it is causing, you know, some congestion and a lot of negative feedback in town. So that would be very much appreciated. I did have one other question regarding the traffic numbers. They say the number is 682. Is that, is that employees and tractor-trailers combined or just passenger cars?
It's combined.
Okay, it's combined. So what would the breakdown be between employees and tractor-trailers?
It was 440 passenger cars and 224. I can pull up the slide again. I don't have it in front of me. There it is. 440 passenger cars and 242 truck trips.
Okay, so the truck trips, what percentage of them would be heading towards Middleborough, either to the 495 interchange?
So we did just one trip distribution for passenger cars and we expect that the truck trips will follow that same pattern, but more will get on 495 than the passenger car. So I think, I think the number heading to the north was somewhere in the 85% range.
Okay, getting on to 495, either north or south?
Yeah.
Okay.
Overall. I don't have a specific number.
Okay, so the other 15% would?
We would assume, I guess, would that be local traffic or head south on 105 for other local stuff, Matt?
Yes, we have, I'm looking at the distribution right now. So we would have 15% turning right out of the site. So that would be heading south on 105, 85% would be turning left, and that splits off in different directions.
Okay. Okay, but 100% of the tractor-trailers turning left would be going on 495, either north or south?
If there would be, if there was a restriction placed on that, then yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And based on my earlier comments in our discussion, Leanne, I would say you're probably talking about 98% because probably that there would be 2% to do a local delivery in Middleborough. But again, it would need to be policed, but again, I hear your comments and we intend to condition to keep the trucks to the major roads and off secondary roads. So if you wanted to write up some, give me a condition that you want to have covered in Middleborough, and we're happy to include that.
Okay. Yep, that, that would be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Leanne, while you're here, I mentioned that I received a letter from the Conservation Commission. Do you know if anybody is attending tonight from the Conservation Commission?
I'm not sure. I saw that one other person from Middleborough was on here, but I don't know who it is. It's just for the name. It just said Middleborough.
It's a select many things.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I want to make comment to this while you're here. So if either of you want to pass it along, that we did receive their letter.
Yep, I can pass that along tomorrow.
Conservation Commission will review that. Our peer review engineer has also received it. So, you know, their comments have not fallen on deaf ears either.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So in addition to that, we did receive the two letters, one from environmental partners and one from VHB that we've been discussing tonight, which is the traffic peer review and the peer review response from VHB. And then further on our glossary of documents received, we have received an Acousta Fence Distribution Facility Truck Traffic Noise Project document, Amazon Decision by Braintree Planning Board, Amazon Trucks Creating Traffic Headaches in Milford document, Blocking Exterior Sounds to Reduce Noise Pollution document, EPM Calculator HUD Exchange document, CEDS Project Impact Assessment Checklist document, CEDS Quality of Life Impact Review Checklist, Feasibility of Installing Noise Reduction Technologies documents, Installing Acousta Fence Cuts Coca-Cola Plant Industrial Noise, NoiseCon 2019, Massachusetts Noise Related Statutes, Regulations and Policies. All documents received. Noise Abatement and Mitigation Measures Received. Project Noise Visual Documents Received. Reversing Alarms. And Cisco-Lakeville Info, which was a lengthy document that I read through. Looks like a blog from the time when the Cisco information or proposed project was going through. And then the Clear Difference Between Warehouse and Distribution Centers Documents and Truck Terminal Permitting Noise Assessments. So I can assure you, we have received all of those, looked through them and passed them along to all related parties. I believe that most of those, if not all, came from Mr. Smith from Rush Pond Road. So that's been heard. At this time, I'd like to continue with some public comment from attendees of the meeting. I have quite a few people that aren't sharing their screen, so I'm going to assume that they don't want to speak. Anybody that does want to speak, please raise your hand. And I will call on you for a brief comment. Joe Chamberlain, make sure you unmute yourself and you have the floor. You're remuted, Joe.
There you go. I have seen this process work out in other parts of the state, south coast, Massachusetts. And I kind of, equivalent to, you know, the dry sponge that you can drip an awful lot of water on and it holds it fine for quite a long time until all of a sudden there's water everywhere. This is what tends to happen. You get some development along a major road like 105. Everything seems to be doing okay until one additional thing happens. And the next thing you know, you take nine minutes to go one mile. Does the town, if something like this were to happen with the addition of this large facility, does the town have any say on dealing with the landlord, the people that are leasing the building or bought the building that are running the business to do something about, you know, a traffic clogging problem? I'm not sure who can answer that.
Well, so I can speak to it a little bit, that because this isn't just site plan review, this is, the planning board is the special permit granting authority. So us, this is basically a fact-finding process for us for six months, where all these meetings bring all this information through the peer review agents and the proponents. And the planning board then needs to sit down and make some tough decisions on how to condition the special permit. And one of those conditions could be that if traffic, which right now they propose the traffic at this 681 or whatever it is, trips per day. And my proposal would be to condition the special permit that if that exceeded 10% higher, that they would have to come back to discuss the conditions to the special permit. So this one project, to say that what it's going to produce for traffic based on the numbers, I don't think that's going to bust the sponge, but I understand what you're saying. And it is a cumulative effect, but I don't think that all of that would be beyond this, caused by this project. And so, yes, we do have a control, but it'd have to be provable with traffic counts, which we can condition into the special permit that would be done over like the next five years or however long, two, five and 10 years from now.
The problem is you're trying to condition something in a what-if situation. You don't know how it's going to work out until after the fact. And all of a sudden, you know, everyone's saying, hey, we can't get through anymore. You know, it takes me forever to get somewhere. I can't pull out of this driveway. I can't get in here. I can't get out there. At this point, what can the town do to alleviate a situation that develops like this?
Scott, with your experience, could you speak to that?
I guess I don't understand the question. Are you asking for some type of remedy after the project is built and you find that the impacts are not, are more severe than they're projected to be? Is that your question?
That's pretty much it. It's sort of like, you know, no battle plan survives first contact with the enemy. It's great to have, you know, all these facts and figures and everything. And on paper, it looks like it should work out well. What alternative do we have if it doesn't work out well?
So I believe, you know, we talked about a monitoring program. I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with those to understand exactly what the remedies are if in the monitoring program something is different. You know, Matt or Jim, if one of you could jump in and maybe explain that a little bit better?
Yeah, I mean, if, like I said, six months after occupancy, we'll be doing our first monitoring program and then we'll be required to do it for five years after that. If there is a, you know, notable increase in traffic over what we projected, I think MassDOT would probably request us to do some additional capacity analysis to see if the discrepancy in the projections is having any significant impacts at those locations. Say, for example, you know, the traffic heading to the east, let's just say the Route 79 Commercial Street intersection, you know, was experiencing higher increases than we expected. MassDOT might say you should reanalyze that intersection and maybe modify the signal timing and phasing to accommodate the shift in traffic patterns. That could be one example of a remedy that we could be responsible for if the projections were lower than actual.
And I might just add to that, and that's part of our goal here and also projecting traffic volumes that are as realistic as possible. We all know that it's a, we can't tell the future and there certainly will be some fluctuations. Traffic projections are not an exact science, but certainly if we can try to get as close to reality as possible at this stage of the game, it just makes it that much smoother moving forward, in addition to, of course, the monitoring program.
Thank you both.
I just see two really, you know, this sort of perfect storm situation developing with the movement, with the relocation of the commuter rail station. You're going to have people bicycling, walking, having to cross the street, using shuttle buses, driving their vehicles over there at intersection in close proximity to the 105-28 one. I just, you know, that's going to be the perfect storm. And if you just back up and, you know, no matter what traffic study you do, you know how traffic backs up. All it takes is that one intersection and everything backs up from that one intersection. And the trucks can't pull out and the cars can't pull in and nobody can get out anywhere. And everyone's sitting there stuck in your classic traffic jam. I've been in situations like that in areas that seem to be semi-rural. But all it takes is that perfect situation like that, and that's what we're working towards. And again, once that happens, you know, you can reanalyze all that you want, but what alternative does the town have to have some controls over something like that? What does it go to the state? Jim, do you want to take that or Matt?
Yeah, so all of our study area intersections are under MassDOT jurisdiction. So they would have the ultimate say on what happens with those intersections and any remedies that may need to be put in place.
I'm not sure who can answer this question, but I have to assume that MassDOT has been approached or is planning. They must be putting in some kind of pedestrian crossing signals down there at 79 and 105 to get people from the apartments across the street to the new station? Yes, no?
That's later. I think that'll come later.
Okay.
I don't know that we would know that for this project. Anyway. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Scott?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for letting me speak. I was hoping that I might be able to get a copy of the peer review comments that were discussed tonight and also a copy of the PowerPoint presentations that were made tonight. My first question is, we're talking about a TDM that's focused on cars. I'm wondering if there's a truck equivalent of that that is being proposed?
No, nothing specific to trucks.
Okay. The reason I'm asking the question is, we talked about possibly having the night activity on the east side of the warehouse and that would depend on the velocity of trucks during the day. So you've got 121 trucks coming in and 121 trucks coming out. But obviously, the frequency of that, and you've highlighted what you think the frequencies are going to be at the peak times, but we really don't know a whole lot about the non-peak time distribution of the trucks. And I just wondering if there shouldn't be something that's voluntary And I, I just wondering if there shouldn't be something that's voluntary whereby we try to level out or smooth out the number of trucks that would jam. I mean, obviously, I know the chairman doesn't want to get into the operation. But with regards to traffic, if you look at the average number of trucks, it's about a truck every six minutes, about. And I'm just thinking to myself, if we knew it was average, it's the peaks that would cause the traffic jams that, that we've talked about here.
Matt, can you speak to that?
I don't think we'll know for sure what the temporal distribution of the trucks will be. But like you said, Mr. Scott, you know, it is in the range of, you know, one truck every six minutes if it were distributed over the course of the day. I don't know that I have any specific information for you that, that would say otherwise in terms of truck distribution, but I think that's the order magnitude we're talking.
Okay. You mentioned the fact that you had the IT 150 data. And then you, you mentioned something about there's about 47 other facilities that you've looked at counts. And I'm just wondering if those 47 counts are national or regional? And is there any kind of breakdown as to what kind of facility it is in terms of straight warehousing, wholesale warehousing, fulfillment centers, et cetera?
For that particular data set, no, I don't have that level of detail. Those 47 sites are what make up the ITE database for that particular the weekday evening peak hour for land use code 150. So that's a total of 47 sites. They give you the range of, you know, what was the smallest site, what was the largest site, what's the average size? But they don't necessarily give you what specific region they're in. I think it's just assumed that they're from across the country unless they specify otherwise.
Okay. You also mentioned the fact that you looked at the transportation rate at the Christmas tree shop. And it was slightly higher, but not much, but in keeping with what you considered appropriate for this site. Was there any breakdown of the employee cars versus the trucks? And what I'm struggling for is, as you know, the Christmas tree shop warehouse is larger than the proposed warehouse. But it's been there for 10 years. So there ought to be a pretty good feel for the number of employees, the number of employee parking spots, the trip distribution. And my wife went on the internet and found an interesting chart. And it showed the the velocity of, of traffic coming out of that facility. So we've got quite a bit of information in our own backyard that might help us narrow down some of the things we've talked about tonight, even though the ultimate will be knowing the, the tenant. And Tyler's already said that as soon as you know the tenant, we're going to revisit from the traffic point of view. But one thing that, that I noticed on the website that my wife found was it says overnight parking, if delivering freight, is apparently okay. And I'm just wondering, has that been talked about in the planned discussions? Because I believe Peter had mentioned his concerns at one of the meetings about overnight truck parking. And I'm just, I'm just saying, at least the warehouse that you checked for comparisons allows that. And I just want to make sure that overnight parking is addressed in our parking and operational discussions.
So I can speak to your, your, your first couple of points. I don't have the employee number breakdown for Christmas tree shops. And you did point out that it, it is a larger facility than what we're talking about. But the size of that facility is factored into the rate. So the rate, the trip generation rate that we calculate is based on the number of trips generated and the size of that facility. So that boils down into a trip rate, which is almost identical to the peak hour trip rate for ITE.
Okay. I, I gotta tell you, I actually have to compliment you. The amount of information that's in your traffic studies is incredible. And I've read through everything that I could get my hands on. And appendix 10 was particularly revealing when it showed the 916 20 traffic counts and the 9617 traffic counts, both northbound and southbound. And according to my calculations, on the 16th, there were 83 trucks northbound. On the 17th, there were 111 truck counts. And we just said that we anticipate 121 in and 121 out, which comes up to the 224. So isn't the number of trucks that's being proposed significantly higher than the current number of trucks? Because these are additional trucks to the count.
Correct.
And that's, that was my first point, I think I talked about tonight, Mr. Scott, was all this traffic is going to be new.
Okay.
This doesn't exist now and it's, it's going to, if, if approved, it's 100% new. And in addition, whatever those counts are, we currently don't look at.
The, the only point I was making, it's double the number of trucks from one facility. And we know that Ocean Spray is adding another 50 docks. So that's going to be additional number of trucks. And I, I, I just feel like people need to realize that the number of trucks is going to significantly increase based on what we know right now. And the thing I'm having difficulty getting my arms around is trucks are at least four to five cars. And I don't know how you factor in the difference between trucks and cars. Because if I were to multiply the number of trucks by four, that's a lot of car equivalents. And I'm not sure, Matt, how you guys deal with that.
Yeah, so, so that's dealt with in the, the software that we use for capacity analysis, which is called Syncro. So Syncro has an input for the percentage of trucks that are in your traffic volumes. So for every, you know, every turning movement we have in our study area that we analyze has a percentage of trucks associated with it. And then that, that software, like you just said, you know, does a passenger car equivalent calculation and factors that into the analysis.
Great. Mr. Chairman, your anecdotal story about getting gas at seasons, I've got an equivalent of that. And since I've been working on this project, I've been going to McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts a lot more.
It's your fault.
Excuse me?
It's your fault, all that traffic.
Well, I know that, but the, the point I'm making is if, if you go into the Dunkin' Donuts now, you just get off the road. If you come out of the Dunkin' Donuts, you have to wait for the light to sink and hope the, the 495 link sites up. And then if you go to McDonald's and you try to make a left-hand turn, you often give up and make a right-hand turn and then loop back around in one of the parking lots. And I, I guess what was brought up by Middleborough is important. And I'm, I'm just thinking in my own mind, if I were to look at the venue from 28 and 105 all the way to the, for the sake of argument, Lori Lane, the, the quickest thing that jumps out is the fact that all those areas have two lanes in both directions and turning lanes. But when you get to Route 79, it's very clear that right before Bridge Street, near the funeral home, just past CBS, it necks down to one lane.
Yep.
And, go ahead.
Well, I just, I guess, I don't want to cut you off as much as there's a lot of people working on this. Is this something that Mast dot looks at? Matt?
Yeah, when you say, is this something that Mast dot looks at, what, what are you referring to in particular?
Well, what, what Mr. Scott's talking about specifically, when you come up the hill from 495 towards the proposed site. And it does reduce from two lanes to one lane in the southbound direction. Is that something that Mast dot looks at for their traffic impacts and how it's going to affect that area?
Sure, I mean, I mean, as a, as an area goes from being heavily commercial to more residential, say, you know, as you go to the west and south, you don't really want to have a four-lane section. You know, that's not really the, the best, you know, treatment for a neighborhood area. So, you know, they try to fit the road to the demand essentially. So they're going to reduce the road from four lanes to two lanes when, you know, when the volumes are acceptable to do so.
Right, but I think.
Not sure if that answered your question.
Well, yes, I understand why it's there. But I guess, and I think it's Mr. Scott's question is, would Mast dot look at that and say, because of the proposed project and what it's going to be, that should be extended for another quarter mile? So that the, the two lanes on the right side of the road allows traffic to not bottleneck until the trucks pull into the proposed site?
I think in this case, that would be unlikely, but I, I do see your point. And, you know, the, the volume of road is what dictates how many lanes you need. So it's, it's a function of the capacity and, and the, and the demand. In, in this case, I, I doubt that Mast dot would, would opt to extend a four-lane section in this area.
Is that kind of what your point was, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, and I guess the point is that if you look at Bridge Street, it cries out for the fact that there's a lot of trucks going to Ocean Spray, down Bridge Street and other locations. And the minute a truck's in that turn lane, the traffic getting around is only car traffic at some risk because they go on the shoulder. But a truck's not going to get by a turning truck on the left, okay? And it just seems to me, since the development of this stretch is going more and more like what's toward the east, it seems to me it demands a very, very careful look. And just to further, besides the Bridge Street bottleneck, if a truck's pulling out of the west boundary of the site from those docks, it's going to block traffic in two directions. And if that were to occur at peak traffic times, it's going to create a safety hazard, in my opinion. And there's no signalization at Lori Lane. And we're not even proposing at this point, any flashing lights or warnings or, or anything. And I think from Lori Lane to Bridge Street needs a very, very careful analysis, given the current conditions. But emphatically with regard to the potential of turning cars and turning trucks on the Lori Lane side. I think if there were a truck lane that would allow you to come from Route 79 to the entrance to the site on the backside of the funeral home, between the funeral home and CBS, you could at least get the trucks, the 121 trucks into the facility. But it's still going to be impacted by a truck that's turning left on Bridge Street. So I, I feel like from 79 to Lori Lane needs some real serious careful looks because I understand what Matt's saying with regard to the total volume. But the geometry, I think, is problematic. And we have to get the trucks in and out. Otherwise, we're going to make the traffic from Lori Lane all the way to 79 impacted. And we will begin to see impact on the Route 105 coming from Route 18. So I feel that, that that particular area, and, and I'm anticipating that the peer reviewers, after they see all the comments and the DOT, I think they're going to pick up on that because it's so obvious that it needs attention.
Yeah, so I can, I can at least speak to the point of the Bridge Street. House Bill number 5240, line 841, line 842. There's $2.5 million proposed for a signalization of the Main Street intersection. So I think just on the overall, I, you know, I can't see the outcome of, of some of the specifics that you said. But yes, they are definitely looking at that area and how to better that specific intersection.
Well, that takes the entrance off the table and then we only need to focus on the exit. But once you get your, your number of employees and the, the parking situation, once we know all that, you'll, you'll be able to revisit Lori Lane. But I, I don't think we should neglect the fact that there is a mixing of trucks and cars at both the entrance and the exit of the site. And I know Peter brought that up earlier. And I'm hoping that the reconfigured parking numbers may allow some creativity in, in leaving that. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to send you another thesis on traffic rather than bring everything up at the planning board meeting.
I appreciate that.
I feel that.
I, I appreciate when you do that. It's good to get it in text. It helps us to digest it too. And try to think about it.
You know, and I, and I don't want to make these meetings any longer, but I do have a concern. And that's, we're working against a six-month time clock. A project like this, in my experience, needs nine months to a year to flush out all the details. Without the tenant, it makes it very difficult for the board to really have enough flexibility with conditions. And I, I'm concerned that if you guys have to vote on this by March 4th, we may be doing a disservice to each other.
I, I can, let me just say, I don't think that that's a definitive date. I think that that's the original timeline set forth. And Tyler, I think you should probably verify that if we needed to continue for another hearing or so, there was time in that schedule to allow for a little continuation at the end of that, that we're not forced to make a determination on March 4th.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. And I think, Brittany, I don't need you to pull it up, but maybe you can just verify that what I'm saying is correct. Is that the final hearing date is just titled closing, closing hearing or closing comments or something to that effect? So that if there was information or a specific topic that needed to slide, you know, that hearing is, is sort of a placeholder in a sense, that there's not a specific topic right now specified, so that if it slid to that one, it could. Or to, to the other point, if it needed to slide to another date past that. There is some room and flexibility in the schedule. You know, here, Mr. Scott's point, I just think at this point, I'm not sure what the extension would do in terms of bringing more information forth from our front. You know, we've, we've gone pretty, I shouldn't say pretty deep, we've gone very deep on, on all the topics that are typical to present in typical projects. But I think if there's a specific need and specific reason for something more to be looked at, that we do have some flexibility in the existing schedule and then obviously can also add another here.
I, I just have one last thing that, that popped in my mind. I'm still trying to understand why we need so many empty trailers and how they fit into the trips in, trips out. When I looked at the DOT letter that was in the appendix, they talked about 153 spaces for empty trailers. And I thought that that number had been 130. And I'm just wondering, is DOT got information that I don't have? Or is that there's another 23 future potential storage trailers?
Did you lose some for the snow? And so they have the original one, Brittany?
Where we did that turnaround on the east side, that was a peer review comment, there was.
It was in the, it was in appendix, it, it was in appendix 10 DOT's letter back to y'all. And it talked about 153 spaces of empty trailers. And, you know, we talked about, you know, land bank parking and you're going to modify that. I'm still struggling with what are these empty trucks? How does it fit into the in and exit? And, and again, I'm not trying to get into the weeds. I'm just trying to understand why there's so many and how they fit into the potential movements in and out of the site. They may be just internal moves. I don't know, Tyler.
I can answer a little bit just on the, on the, the need or the reason for them and why tenants like them. When, when you think about the cab and the trailer, oftentimes the tenants own the trailers and not the cabs. So, you know, most of the time when you see, for example, a Stop and Stop trailer pass you, you know, that trailer is owned by Stop and Stop with the cab as a third-party driver of some sort. So it allows them flexibility to have a variety of people who can, who can bring these trailers, but they need places to put their company-owned trailers, branded trailers. And that's why the businesses like them. So it's, it's more of just a market need, market desire. And that's why the businesses like them. Um, so it's, it's more of just a market need, market desire, something we see very typically. But that's sort of the, the background of why is because they own the trailers and love the trucks.
Could, could I ask a question related to that, Tyler? That I, I assume, I, I've talked to some guys that own trucking companies and they may send a truck, say, full of potato chips. And they don't wait for the trailer to be unloaded. But they may have a contract with that distribution center or whatever, or wherever their destination is. And they left the trailer last week that's now empty. So they then take it empty when they leave, or does a tractor come and just drop a trailer and leave without a trailer?
I think that the goal is always to never have a, a cab without a trailer because it's just, it's, that's the, the, the vein of inefficiency for shipping. So anytime you see that, something probably didn't go right. But, uh, but yeah, no, I, I do think that that's a factor that, um, they can come in and drop, uh, trailers. Um, and, and going back a couple of discussions here, we had talked about a facility owned, whether it be electric or propane driven. You know, smaller cab that, that moves these things. So that, that does sometimes happen, yes. But the, the trailer parking, you know, uh, from that perspective, from the perspective that I said, uh, a-again, it's just through the vein of flexibility, uh, that tenants do like to have that. And that's what we see in the market frequently, but that's, these are some of the reasons.
And as far as, uh, Mr. Scott had called out a discrepancy in the number of trailer spaces. I, I thought that we lost some due to the snow removal or something else. Is that something that maybe they received the filing? Free amendment?
I can speak to that. Um, the latest plans that we prepared in December, um, showed 130 trailer parking spaces. Um, we did lose some due to a turnaround at a dead end spot. I will look and see what the number was on the plans that we submitted in November. But as of right now, we're, we're showing 130 trailer parking spaces on the site plans.
And, and I can clarify because I, I pulled up the Mast dot letter, that 153, that was, uh, one of the original numbers when there was actually going to be some land banking of the trailer storage spaces as well. So that, that number, you know, is, is outdated. And that was what it was at the time we submitted our scoping letter to Mast dot.
And Matt, to be clear, in either scenario, it's, it's less at this point.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. So does anybody else from, uh, the public, Daniel Ferrera?
Um, this may not be an, even an issue, but, um, there's been a lot of talk with, uh, drones and things like that for deliveries with, you know, places like Amazon. Is that something that anyone's brought up yet? Is air traffic and the noise associated with that and, that sort of thing? If there were ever drone packages leaving that facility or anything like that?
I don't think that anybody has discussed it. Tyler, is there a probability or have you seen that in any facilities that you've built?
We, no, we, we haven't seen that and don't have familiarity with the drone. So when we, we went around and, um, for the last hearing, when we had Arco introduce the building, I may have mentioned that I, I toured the state and looked at other similar sized facilities that they had built. With a variety of tenants and none of those, uh, had that capability. But I do understand that, um, it's something that's definitely out in the news and that people are trying to pursue. There's different groups out there. Uh, but nothing that I've seen to date has had that. Um, and that Arco is built, who, who's going to be, um, the construction manager.
So to, to your point, Daniel, I think that's a good point, uh, to always bring up things that, you know, you may not think about when we were talking about some of these things that are cut and dry and black and white. So that's something that we'd definitely make a note to make a condition of the special permit. So they would have to come back to us if they were going to do any kind of, uh, air delivery like that.
Uh, the other thing I just thought of while we were talking about all the trucks and trailers, um, will these be registered out of Lakeville as far as excise tax?
The trucks and trailers, I wouldn't be able to say, but yes, the business will be registered, um, in Lakeville. We have to, pardon the property taxes are given. Um, but I'd have to dig more in on the trailer and truck situation. I don't have the answer for that.
Thank you, Daniel. My screen around. Anybody else like to speak? All right. You guys both went up at once. Mary Murphy. State your address and then make your comments.
I'm at two Lori Lane in the butter. And that's kind of my question to you, Mr. Chairman. Last, at the last meeting, a map was shown of the, I guess it's a 300 foot radius that were considered a butters.
Yep.
And so I understand that my property and number one Lori Lane were included in that 300 foot radius. But the other five houses on Lori Lane were excluded. Is that true?
I don't think that they were included on the certified of butters list.
So they might not be aware of this meeting for traffic. Because my point being those five other households are going to have to go out Lori Lane onto Main Street and they don't even have a clue that this is happening.
That's very possible if, if they don't follow.
It's fair that I just, it's just doesn't sound right that those five houses, where they can't go anywhere else except to the end of Lori Lane to Main Street and go left or right.
So I'm going to have, uh, Amy from Town Council clarify what I'm going to say, but my understanding is your standing in being in a butter requires ownership of the property. And that a butter 300 foot is a requirement set forth by either a, a bylaw in Lakeville or state statute. Amy, could you clarify that for me?
You are correct. It's, um, a 40A. It's a state statute. And at 300 feet radius is, gets you notification to have standing to be, to have a presumption of standing, you have to be in a butter or to, or in a butter, two in a butter. But the requirement is that they have to notice the property owners within a 300 foot radius.
Was it the Cisco project, uh, 500 foot radius?
It may have been. I think that was because it was through a different board, like the zoning board of appeals or something, which, or.
Had to go through town meeting vote.
Because it had to go through town meeting vote, it required the 500 feet instead of 300.
Well, I feel bad for those, um, five other households that.
Well, I mean, if you can get in contact with them and, or tell them to go to the town website, they can request either information if they wanted to be involved.
Okay. All right. That will do. Thank you.
Mr. Ayers, would you like to say something? And if you could, please state your address. I'm sorry, you're still muted, sir. There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
All right. My name is John Ayers. I'm in a butter. I live at 21 Rush Pond Road. And I have about four fairly quick questions. So my understanding that the, there's no traffic lights, uh, at the exit or entrance into the property. Is that correct?
As currently proposed, that is correct.
Well, I want to ask Matt what, how, what did he assume when he did his traffic analysis?
That they would remain unsignalized.
All right. And you concluded that it's no problem.
Correct.
I don't agree with that myself, but you're the, with respect, the expert in this area and not. But I think of pulling out a Hanafin with no traffic lights, it's not only dangerous, but it takes time. And I would also say that if the analysis shows it works without the lights, probably won't get the lights. Anyways, that's my first concern is the traffic lights. Thank you for the answer. Uh, the second question is, and Dick Scott brought it up. And that's the residual traffic that will most certainly, in my view, go from 105 over 18 to avoid the morning and nighttime traffic. Did you consider that in your study?
Um, did I include any diversions from 105 to 18?
If you work at 18 in the traffic circle, a congestion due to the traffic going from 105 over 18.
The limits of our study area stopped at the 495 ramps.
So the answer is no.
No.
So based on your considered experience, what do you think? You think that's a real event that can happen?
Yeah, I think it, of course it could. Uh, would it be a result of this project in the, in the small amount of traffic we're, we're sending that way? I would, I would say no.
Well, I don't think you have any idea how much traffic would go that way. All right. The answer is no, you never looked at it. Okay. Does the state or any other federal agency, I don't know. Do they require that you do a risk assessment?
No.
They don't.
Can you be a little more specific? I, I, I'm not required to do a risk assessment, but I'm not really sure what you're, what you're asking.
Sorry. Let me explain. I'm talking about, uh, risk management. Uh, I'm talking about, uh, another word is, uh, enterprise risk management. And I'm just curious if the state has any regulations or requirements that says you must do a risk assessment. And, and this also is addressing Joseph's comment early, I think, where you know, you can have a disaster. Of course, those things happen periodically. So to me, it all comes back to risk. And is there a risk analysis done for this project?
Uh, it's not required by the state as part of the traffic impact assessment. No.
That's no.
Can I chime in? I guess what risk are you trying to get at? Is that i- if our, if our trip generation is off? Or what's the risk that you're attempting to analyze?
Uh, let me just digress for a second. There's a, the answer to your questions, there's a category of risks called the unknown risks. And they surround every project. I don't care what type of project they're there. And the approach is to identify possibilities of something going wrong, adversely impacting the project. And once you have a list of these, you prioritize them. And then you say, what mitigation plan can I put into place to mitigate the risk? And reduce the impact, if any, on the project.
Sure.
Basically what I'm talking about.
So in, in other words, um, a, a miss, a, a risk may be that, you know, the, the traffic that we're projecting, our assumptions may be off. And so to mitigate that risk, we are committing to monitoring the traffic for five years in accordance with Mast DOT requirements.
Well, let me be, uh.
So that can help mitigate, um, that risk.
Well, that's a possibility, but I, I'm going back to Joseph. And he was saying that in spite of all the good planning and everything else, you can have one interchange, an intersection, let's say, that becomes a bottleneck. So if I was doing a risk analysis, I'd pick up on Joseph's uh, concern and say, okay, let's say we have a risk that that will happen. What can we do to mitigate it before it happens?
Maybe I can help. Maybe I can help answer that. And I think, was that the, was that the comment where he talked about sort of the sponge example?
Yes.
Well, the intersection that becomes a bottleneck, the way I took.
Yeah. So it's like a critical, hitting a critical point. So similar to, not similar, the exact same thing of what we're doing, where we have, uh, a traffic study done and we review this process and we talk about the impacts. Using the, the sponge example, because I think it's a, it's actually a good example. Every project ahead of us has to do that. So i- if there was ever a point where that risk happened where the sponge becomes oversaturated. Um, you know, the town and the planning board would be essentially notified of that via the traffic study from another project. That was all it's a cumulative nature of review.
Let's bring up the sponge. How would you handle that risk?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You cut out for one second. How would I handle what?
How would you identify the sponge risk? And then how would you mitigate it?
Yeah. And that's, that's for traffic engineers to do so that the future.
The basic methodology. So it sounds like the state doesn't require any of this stuff.
Uh, if, if I could just add something though, we're all on state highway here. Everything along the stretch is a state asset. They approach their review from a standpoint of risk. So if they see potential risks in, um, you know, any damage or, or, um, you know, exceeding capacity on any of their facilities, they want to mitigate that risk and they put that upon the proponent and the traffic folks to identify that and mitigate it.
So you were saying that they have taken care of it?
They are, they're, they're protecting their assets is, is how they approach their review.
Uh, now just for information, I have over 30 years' experience as a project manager. In very high tech, uh, jobs, there's risk on every single project. And a lot of things that in hindsight you look at, you say, you know, no one thought of that. And that's because you have to go through a very well-defined, thought, uh, structured risk assessment. So I'm going to leave it there, but because it sounds like you don't do that and the state doesn't do it. And I think it's a big mistake, but.
The, the, the MEEP review process is all about managing risk. It's, it's, it's a very thorough regimented process, you know, geared towards, um, addressing impacts.
Yeah, but if they do that, uh, Matt, you're the, you're running the project, you guys are. So you have to do your own project risk assessment on your project. No one else is going to do it. Anyway, let me just move on here. You did a static analysis, correct?
Static in what way?
You used, uh, books with data, methodology, standards. He didn't do any dynamic analysis, no simulations.
Well, I mean, we count the amount of traffic over the course of the peak hour. So it's.
Oh, that's static. You just bought in data. I'm talking about simulating the traffic flow. So you can see in real time, it can build in queues and everything else. Now, now, is that because no one in the state of Massachusetts ever does this in the digital age?
No, no, it's, it's, it's not an uncommon practice, but it's, you know, reserved for, for certain situations. This, this in particular isn't something that, um, I think we would need to do any sort of visual simulations for. The software that we use, while you say it may be static, it, it is, it is analyzing the traffic over the course of an hour and, and adapting to changes that, that will happen. So I know.
Software, it's a canned application software. I'm talking about for your project. You, if they do have, uh, simulation software that you can tailor to your project, and if it's available to you, I would suggest that you do that. Just to see how it compares to the static analysis. Sorry about this, but I feel kind of strong about this. Now, the last question I have is, uh, can the tenant increase the number of truck trips?
Is that the end of your sentence?
Yeah. Is that, yeah.
Sorry?
Is that the end of your comment?
That's my question.
So that is possible. However, the planning board intends to cap that. So if they've given us an amount, say this 681 or whatever the number is of trips, my intent is to say that with this traffic monitoring process, if they exceed 10% higher than whatever they tell us, that that jeopardizes the special permit or they come back, more mitigation, that triggers this issue, I think, that you're talking about.
Well, I, that's a question. That's all. And I, you know what reminds me of it is the Cisco. Because it was stated that they had so many truck trips, but that was just the initial. And of course, if you grow your business. And of course, if you grow your business, you have to expand the truck trips. So I'm just wondering, this tenant that moves in and he wants to expand his business, is he gonna have the authority to expand it so he can grow his business?
So Tyler, would you say that your, your project is designed at, I mean, I don't think you could cover anymore on the property and, and add on to the building. And based on the building's square footage, you're pretty much maxed out with the avail, availability of loading docks and anything like that, no?
That, that's correct. And the type of tenant that we see take a space like this, they come in and they occupy the entirety of the space day one, so that while their business may shift over time and there may be different trends that occur, um, their, their business is based on occupying all the available square footage essentially day one. Um, so the idea of, of growing, it's, it's more, yes, can the business change and, and needs of consumers change? Absolutely. Um, but there is some stagnant fact of the size of the building and what can be in it and how they use it, and they do usually occupy all the day one. Um, if they don't need it, they just go to a, a different sized facility that's more appropriate for what they need, um, because they don't want to pay for the extra space.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and just one other point, just on the, on the software and data. Matt and his team do do fieldwork in Lakeville, so it's, while they are using books and data and different things like that to do their study, a lot of the data is generated real time from the field in Lakeville. They just don't want to make it seem like they've, you know, never stepped foot out of, in front of a computer or something like that.
Wow, you're familiar with simulations?
To a degree, yes.
Yeah, quite.
To the degree Matt would be.
Yeah, quite different. Well, thank you very much. You addressed my questions and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Uh, Mr. LeCamer, you had your hand up earlier. I apologize for the delay.
Okay, um, yeah, Rich LeCamer brought a selectmen. I, I just want to clarify something that even before this project, uh, began, the, uh, the town had requested the state, you know, to put a traffic light at the intersection of 105 and Bridge Street. And all the studies and all the analysis and, uh, the proj, the project, uh, was ready to go. Um, and it was supposed to be addressed last year and, uh, we had been waiting for the, some funding to, for the state to help do the traffic light. And in the transportation bill that was signed by the governor last week, um, they are going to, uh, you know, put the traffic light, you know, at the intersection of 105 and Bridge Street, which in my opinion, it's gonna make a big difference, you know, in that area, especially, you know, uh, talking about widening the entrance, you know, of Bridge Street, because some of those trucks that are going down Bridge Street that are coming, you know, from, um, both Lakeville and Middleborough, you know, i- is a problem in getting out onto 105 from Bridge Street. So, um, we are actually talking to the state next week to try to get this project, uh, moving as, as quickly as possible. Uh, this is needed no matter what. So I just wanted to know, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna move forward hopefully very shortly.
Thank you. That's helpful information. Uh, does anybody else have any comments? Barbara?
Hey Mark, this question's for Tyler. Um, I just didn't want to get too off-topic earlier, but the governor did sign a bill last week talking about, um, I, I don't know whether it was the transportation bill or related to climate change, but he was talking about the, um, changes to, to buildings, specifically EV charging stations. Does your plan allow for any EV charging stations, uh, for any of the parking there?
Yes.
Yeah, we are, we are showing 20, uh, passenger vehicle, uh, EV charging spaces. So that would be 10 chargers, dual, dual-head chargers, but for 20 parking spaces.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Uh, anybody else? Keep in mind, I'm trying to scroll through two screens, because there are a lot of us. Hold your hand up if you want to speak. I don't see anybody. It's one, Art, Artavio Aguirre.
Well, I just have a question. Mr. Ferreira brought up a good point regarding the drones and that you said something about putting it in the, I guess, bylaws or whatever.
Special permit.
A special permit, thank you. Um, would we be able to do something regarding traffic as far as certain time periods during the middle of the night? Where, um, you know, instead of 30 trucks coming out of the facility, we only allow, or, or it's written in there that only five trucks would be allowed? Is something along those lines?
Um, I don't know that we can control what comes off the streets and off the highway into the property. Uh, I do plan to make a condition to make overnight uh, truck traffic within the facility remain on, I think it's the east side of the building away from Rush Pond Road. But, uh, other than that, you know, I think that there probably, and, and, uh, the VHB team or Tyler can speak more to, I think that the truck traffic is, based on their trip generations, much lower, like six trips or something rather than 30.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. The, the number was four. Uh, you know, Matt's study is, is specific to traffic, as Brittany said, it's an off-site focus during peak hours, so it's a worst-case scenario. That's how traffic looks at it. But in previous studies from our previous hearings, uh, the trucks per hour, I think, were four during those nighttime hours.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, so, uh, anybody else have any comments? Daniel?
Um, getting back to, uh, Mary Murphy's comment about the butters list. Um, I, I spoke about, I spoke out about the last meeting where I wasn't, uh, notified, because I was just outside the perimeter. Um, I, I think I heard, uh, the IT guy that won, you know, whoever set this up, that you have the capability of going, like, 500 people in this meeting. And we're, we're, I don't know where we're at, 20 or 30 people at it right now.
Uh, we were up around, uh, 50, I think, when we started.
Even though, well, you know, it's, whether it's time, town bylaw or, uh, the state sets, I'm not sure about the butter, butters list at 300 feet. I think it would be, I mean, before this thing goes too much further, um, in, it'd be in the town's best interest to notify, maybe not, it doesn't have to be, you know, certified mail, but just get more people involved that are affected, like Lori Lane, Bridge Street, um, 79 people, I mean, I'm sure you guys want to keep the meetings rolling, but a lot of people don't even know that this is even happening, especially under, you know, with COVID going on. A lot of people don't buy the newspaper anymore that it, that it was posted in.
Well, to, to, to both, I, I, I'd like to speak to both, or two points of, to what you're saying, Daniel. Uh, first, I, I think you'd be surprised at how many people are following along. I, I get a lot of feedback from people I'm surprised even know about it. Uh, and I think that's because it's, uh, broadcast on Facebook and people can look at it later. A lot of people do actually follow the town stuff, because there are, uh, on the town website, they can subscribe, so they get notification when there are meetings. And they do, are able to follow along through the butter thing. Um, yeah, because it is a public hearing, and if there is more interest, people can request to get in, but it's just, the, the certified list is what the certified list is. So we can't send it to everybody.
I understand, I understand that, but, uh-
But if more people had interest and they, they sought out access, they could get it.
Right. If you don't, if you're not familiar with the, I mean, if you don't go on Facebook and, uh, Lakeville, like, all the sites that talk about this sort of thing, I don't, I'm not a big social media person. I didn't know anything about it until a few weeks ago. I just, someone on Bridge Street, on this end of Bridge, Bridge Street, who, you know, didn't know anything about it, they thought there might have been some housing going in. But I, I just think it's, and, not from a legal standpoint, I'm, I'm sure you guys have, you know, crossed all your Ts and dotted Is. I'm saying, um, just to get more people that are very affected by this and, oh, you know, aware of it, and just the option to, to join the meeting if they'd like. And I understand they can go, they can ask to be, but if they don't know anything about it, then it's tough to ask.
Understood. Barbara?
Mark, um, I'd just like to respond to Daniel as well. You know, one of the things that I've learned since I've got into town government is the lack of involvement from community members. And the town has gone to efforts to, um, set up a new email system, so you can contact, you can go and register for emails coming through the community on all the things that are affecting us. And the one thing I'd love to get out to people is, please, the more the people that get involved, the more people that come to our meetings, whether it's this or something else, um, it's very, very important. But we also have to follow the rules. And if the rules say 300 feet, we have to follow that rule consistently through the whole process for all development.
I think that's the minimum. I don't think it says 300 feet to the T. I think a 300-foot buffer is the minimum.
Okay, so you think there's a, there's a, there's an option for us to do more?
I think you absolutely could, within the rights and laws. I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I think if you talk to town council, you could have-
Amy, answer that question.
You cannot, you, you cannot make the applicant, um, you cannot, you can't make the applicant notify more than the people that are within the 300. That is what the statute says.
I'm not saying that you, like, I'm not saying that you have to notify and make them notify. I'm saying as the town, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea just to reach out to the, you know, I'm talking maybe a few more dozen houses that are, that are affected by it. Um, you know, like, like Mary said, I mean, all of Lori Lane, uh, wasn't notified. That's, I mean-
So I totally agree with what you're saying. I, I feel it, because I, I live in town and I also am real sensitive to growth and stuff like that. It's just, when you, once you're sitting on this side of the fence, it becomes really difficult to figure out how to do that and how to do that fairly and equitably, because we open up, if we open up 12 units, then the people on the other side are gonna say, well, what 12 units did you leave off over here? And where do you stop that line? So I think what's really important is for people in the community to understand the town really wants to share information. We have a vehicle by which we can, if you don't participate in social media, you can sign up for the email registration, and the more people that know about that, the better, because we want as many people to be involved in these processes as possible. And that's my only comment.
And, and I'm sure a, a small part of this also, Daniel, is to town council's point, we can't make the butter send notifications. So that means it's on the town to do it. If we're gonna do that, and then there's a cost incurred by the town that's not recoverable, then that would be argued, you know, why are we spending that money? It's, it's a slippery slope, but-
I get it. I underst, I understand that. It's a, it's a minimal cost for the, for the scope of the project that we're talking about, but that's, I may have said what I've, need to say, but I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right, uh, anybody else have comments? Looks like we've touched on everybody that wants to. I don't see any hands up. Uh, so at this point, I think we've concluded the traffic discussion for the night. And I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until February 4th at 7:00 PM of the planning board. Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. So motion carries unanimously. This public hearing will be continued until the February 4th meeting date. Uh, Brittany, do you mind just making mention again of what the topics of discussion would be at that meeting?
Yep, sure thing. Um, in, in the original schedule, we had slated, uh, discussions that include the work proposed within wetland buffer zone, um, stormwater management, site grading and erosion control. And in response to the overwhelming, um, you know, and productive conversation that we've had with the peer review team, the town, and the butters, um, we are currently making slight modifications to the site design, which include reducing parking, um, increasing the size of berms, increasing the number of berms, um, and, oh, and relocating the stormwater, um, outside of the wetland buffer zones. And so that, those changes take time, and we also want to present those changes. So what we're proposing is, um, those items I just listed, stormwater, uh, wetland buffer zones, erosion control, um, and grading, we're proposing to move those to February 18th. And at our next hearing on February 4th, we will present those proposed changes as well as, um, any other open items.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so that concludes business tonight. I, I make a motion to adjourn the, uh, this meeting.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Barbara? Peter?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries. That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.